All right, being a little after six and Council Kribbin showed up. We'll call a meeting to order. Would you all join me in the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So Counselor Matthews is virtually online. And Counselor Stevens is on vacation, so she won't be attending this evening. First item on the agenda this evening is public comments. Before we start having people come up, I'll read the verbiage about this. Public comment period is intended for the public to share ideas and-
The fire department and everybody. And also I want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ken. You're very nice. Next person on the public comments roster is Doug Everline. And Doug, I know I saw you around here somewhere. Doug?
We're gonna do a presentation now?
Oh, you're gonna do the presentation with- oh, no, you're- so I'll just wait then, unless you want to make another public comment about something else, Doug? Just you're gonna do- he's gonna make the presentation?
I do have a question. I don't-
Sure, come on up. Yeah, absolutely.
In the meantime, Jennifer-
Just go ahead and give us your name and city, so we have it for the record.
Doug Everline, outside the city limits of Coos Bay.
It doesn't matter.
But I live in- I live in Coos Bay. I was zip code 97420.
Perfect.
But it came to my attention that there were vacancies that were gonna come up on the city council. And I don't know whether this is an Oregon state statute or whether the council could change that. But it seems to me that if your zip code is 97420, I spent an awful lot of time in town. Why can't I- someone like myself run for the council?
That's a good question. I think it's a city charter, but I'm not sure how it relates to the state. But you know who's- we have on this diocese that can help us is our city attorney.
He is. You have to be a citizen of the city of Coos Bay.
So I mean-
That's the requirement.
Is it just- is it the charter or is it state statute or both?
I believe it is in the charter.
Okay.
I believe it's in the charter.
And that can't be changed, huh?
So there's a city charter.
Well, you can change the charter, but that's a- we've done that before. It's very complicated.
Yeah, I mean, if you have an interest in it, you know, I guess you could- you- there's two ways to do it. Ask the council to address it and put it out for a vote to the public. Or you could get enough signatures to write- to get the charter changed, so.
I- I-
Or you could run for county commissioner.
No, thanks.
True.
No, thanks.
Good try. All right. Dean Lundey. Good evening, Dean.
Good evening. I want to apologize first for leaning on the city to join that Zoom meeting with ODOT. It was- it was not transparent. Public comment was not, you know, a couple of us tried to go in and things. So please accept my apology for that. But I'm here to- to ask anyone interested in nature study and stuff. We're looking for a board member for the Divine Nature Academy out there at the membership in the Bay Area Athletic- membership in the Bay Area Athletic Club. The best pool, you know, will make it worth your while. We need a- we need a cook especially that can cook seafood, you know, shoppino like that. So anybody interested in joining the fund, these are- these are the ones you want to see.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Joy Swepps, is that correct?
So this is my first time here, and I thought I was supposed to write my name there. So I just wrote my name, but I'm with Mingus Park Pool.
Okay.
So you can just rewrite that.
Great. So did you want to come and make another comment like Doug did about something else?
Well, I think I'm interested in this, so.
Oh, we'd rather have it.
Okay, all right, all right, good.
I'm sorry I said a pool is better.
All right. So this is a list I have, but that doesn't mean that anyone else in the audience that would like to speak has an opportunity. And I see Mark wants to come on up and make a comment, so be it. Come on up, Mark. Just name, you know the drill. Name and city, please.
I thought the comments were at the back. I was prepared to sit through.
We changed it. We can't make up our minds.
I know. It goes back and forth. And I wasn't positive it was still gonna be six o'clock or- anyway. For some reason, I was driving by the little tugboat that we have under-
On Front Street?
Yes, the littler one. And I- and I saw a family there and some kids were kind of pawing at and stuff. And it clicked in my head that it concerned me that maybe these older boats, I would suspect that they are of an age where they initially had lead paint on them. And lead paint doesn't go away even if you scrape it, because it absorbs into the wood and then it comes back into the new paint. So I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. I wouldn't know what to do with it. My first thought is somehow encapsulate the thing so that it could be viewed but not-
Okay.
-popped on. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up.
It's a good point, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, it's just, I know lead's a big thing.
It is. Thank you. So is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, I'll close public comments. So with that being the case, Nicole, about the boat with lead paint, can we look into that and see if it does? And if it does, we probably need to take some kind of action, I would imagine.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, great. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And on the consent calendar, before I ask a motion to be approved, number B is a grant, and it's for $75,000. And I think, was it Mark Anderson that got it or Jennifer? Okay, so my question is on the $75,000. Good job, thank you. One of many grants that we get throughout the year. And so how are we going to appropriate the $75,000? And how's it gonna be done? So, please.
Okay, so what we planned on using that for was to create a defensible space around Tuppets Park. And we're going to concentrate on where the high density of homes are first and then move our way until we expend the money. We don't expect to get all the way done, but we're gonna put bids out and see how many- how many square feet we can get done with the money.
So that was my question. So you're gonna go out for bids and get it contracted out?
Correct.
Okay, so is this something that we are going to try to do on a regular basis? Because there's a lot of area out there.
I know. We're told this is the last year that this funding is going to be available, but they were kind of hopeful that there might be a bucket that they could pull from. If there is a bucket, and we don't want to compete with the fire department, but if there is a bucket, we'll definitely want to go for it if it's possible.
Okay, thank you. Questions, anyone?
Yes, I just want to thank Jennifer. I think I had asked that a while ago, that we consider a grant, and you made our dreams come true, and you got a $75,000 grant. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I was just gonna comment that I know that there have been some concerns from citizens, so I appreciate this.
Okay, so that being the case, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. So I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar is submitted. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Mingus Park Pool Board Representative. Yeah, come on up. Hey Kathy, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Good seeing you.
This is Kathy McNutt. She's the director, fifty-plus years.
Yeah, so if you both would just introduce yourselves, so we have it for the record, please.
Okay.
And you might want to pull it down. You can pull the mic down.
Okay, thanks. Kathy McNutt, live in Coos Bay, Oregon, and I run the pool and coach.
And I'm Doug Everline. I've been on the pool board since 2005. And I'm the president and secretary right now. If anybody wants to take that duty on, that'd be great. I'm retired. I was with- I was training manager with Sauce Brothers for just over 32 years and retired in February, and I'm not going back. It's nice. Okay, Kathy.
All right, okay. Well, we've got two pictures up here, the one in 1948 of the pool John Littlefield gave us. And then one here recently, 2024. We've come a long way. Anyway, so those are two great pictures we have.
Okay, so we've introduced Kathy and myself. Bruce Day, he owns Day Ship Supply. He's been on the board since 2009. And then my daughter, but she's a free thinker, so I don't have that vote in my pocket. She came on board in October of 2022. And then Jimmy Faraday, he's a retired teacher in Coos Bay. He came on board in 2016, March of 2016. Rebecca Peters is here. Wave your hand, Rebecca. She came on board in that October 2022. Dan Polk, he's a retired teacher from Coos Bay. He came on board in 2010. Mike, Captain Mike Schaefer, he's here. He's a guy in a uniform. He came on board in March of 2022. And then Joy Supas, she owns and operates a CPA firm and also Valkyrie Fitness in town. Joy? And then we also have our senior guard here today, and she also writes all the grants for us. Helen Dees. Back to you.
Okay. There we go.
Affectionately known as Miss Helen.
All right, you betcha. She also works with a lot of our special needs kids, which is really special at the pool. So anyway. Vera, yeah, we- I started down there in 1975. And before that, the pool was just open summers, but eventually the high school started working out there. And anyway, we got several things going down there. And we were struggling along. And after several years, Vera would come down. She lived up above the pool. She would often come down and sit on the bench and watch the kids swim, and she really liked how they all participated and stuff. And anyway, so I'd probably been there. This was 97, 1997 or so, maybe 96. But she came down one day, and I was coaching on deck, and she called me over to the fence. And she said, Kathy, she said, wouldn't you like to have the pool covered someday? And I said, well, not my pool, number one. But I said, you know, maybe someday. But at that point, we had been running it for quite a while, just a parent group with agreement with the city, and it was leaking terribly. We were feeling it every day. And I was thinking, oh, this, you know, city's not gonna go for this too much longer. So anyway, she, you know, we talked a moment, and then she, you know, went on her way. And then, you know, like another week later, she came down, she called me up to the fence again. And she said, Kathy, she said, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to give you $500,000. She said, I want you to form a committee. I want this one gentleman on the board. And she said, can't give any of the money to the city, and it can never go towards wages. Otherwise, I want your group to decide what would be the best.
And that's when we became 501(c)(3).
Yes, and that's when we became the 501(c)(3). We had a great- we got a great group of people on board. And of course, you know, it was interesting at first. We were thinking, oh, we could do this. We could do that. We could make it bigger and dig into the hill, right, you know? And then we're kind of like, okay, calm down. Because at that time, we had lessons. And, you know, you don't want it too deep for the little guys, but yet you had to have it a certain depth to run a swim meet. So, you know, a lot, we, you know, we thought a lot about everything. And so we just came up with the standard pool size, the six lanes. And anyway, you know, whole new tank, whole new everything. And then we had money to buy, like, the slides and the starting blocks. And the previous pool had a diving board, but we couldn't afford that insurance. But we could afford the big slide. We got one as big as we could. Anyway, so we have a big one and a small one. And then with the rest of her money, we, you know, saved it, and we get interest on it each year. And that's how I replaced my equipment and fixed things. So that's- and it's worked very well. It's also worked, which is nice. We give two of our seniors a $1,000 scholarship each year in her name. So I love that. Anyway, yeah.
This is the Oregon Community Foundation.
Yeah. This is kind of interesting, the school lessons and how it started in '75 when a group of parents, like I said, we had, it was open in the summer, and then the high school worked out there in the fall. That's when their swimming season was. And then the pool was closed down. Then you'd have to take your child over to North Bend to swim. Well, a bunch of my parents said, you know, why are we doing this? Why, we want our kids to stay here, and they can swim outdoors. It was a bunch of doctors, in fact. And can't we see if the city will work with us and we run the pool? And so, you know, there was a deal brought up. I, you know, I can't believe, I was just thinking today when I went through stuff. A mother ran the boiler, and the swim team, we took- they took weeks in cleaning the locker rooms. So that's how that was all worked out. And at one time even, you know, they re-roofed the building. And the new building's, like, already been repainted by, you know, people, volunteers. Anyway, but the school lessons, well, a Blossom Gulch teacher, Donna Boselman, her children swam for Gold Coast. And she said, you know, Kathy, she said, I could walk the kids up from Blossom to the pool. Will you teach them lessons? I'll get in and help too, and maybe we could get a couple of volunteers. So we started that. She brought her kids up, and we got people to volunteer and started the lessons. And then, you know, the next year, well, I want my child in Donna Boselman's class because they're gonna swim. They're gonna learn how to swim. Pretty soon, it was all a Blossom Gulch. Then it was all a East Side. Then it was Coos River. I mean, that's how the whole thing grew, was because somebody had an idea, and do you think we could make that work? And, you know, we tried it, and it did, and it's awesome. They used to, the Booster Club would pay for the kids, or the kids would have to bring $5 or $10 or whatever. Now, this last year, it's in Coos Bay's curriculum. So it's all paid for, you know, we turn in what- So that's kind of a neat story, I think, how that all started. And we have kindergarten through sixth grade right now. We're always trying to do something different or add to what we can do. The kids in Coos Bay get out of school early on Fridays. And so we thought, Helen and I are always talking about, what else could we do, you know? And the kids get out early, and so we thought maybe we could do a free after-school swim, be someplace else for them to go besides, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, and we could get them in the water. All the buses right now drop kids off at Mingus Park anyway if they're on swim team or, you know, doing the lessons. And they dropped them off for this free after-school program, which we got funded. And it turned out really, really well. In fact, we're gonna bring it back this spring. It's- it's fun to bring up, I mean, kids and water and us being surrounded by water. It's easy for us to get grants, and I think after 50 years, I think we have a good reputation now. And I think we try and do everything that we can do, you know? Let's try this, or let's do that. So anyway, that's- that's been a win. I have the Marshville High School Swim Team, too. We usually have between 30 and 40 kids. I just came from that practice. And they swim really well. It's fun. You know, I have little ones that start and then have them in high school, and they're a good group of kids. Gold Coast Swim Team is where our little guys start, you know, come down and swim. They don't have to compete, but a lot of them do. It's fun for me because I get a lot of them when they're little, and then I have them in high school. And I- it's not just about swimming, it's seeing them grow up. You know what I mean? So anyway.
And you took on SCAP and North Bend when the North Bend Pool Boiler went down.
Yeah, during COVID, we had, man, we had sixteen hours. Well, we're still open 15 right now, but I had the North Bend High School team. We got a special deal from OSAA that would let us do that. And they're, you know, I'm just all about helping our community. I love North Bend's pool, too. I love ours. You know, we're outside, they're inside, and they helped us when our boiler went down. So I'm just all about that. There's our- there's a picture of our swim meet. We have a big meet the first weekend of August. It's extremely popular throughout the state. People get to camp. We pay a little bit more insurance for them to do that. It's a beautiful setting. It's one of the largest meets in the state. So it's- it's a lot of fun. There are some of our programs there, you know, swimming in the rain, swimming in the sun, the snow. It's kind of a pretty picture. The only time it's really hard down there is when it gets icy, because of course, and my senior boys want to go racing across the deck. I'm just saying. Yeah, anyway. So, but here are some of our summer programs. We had a free swim this summer from 2:00 to 4:00. That turned out really well. There you see Helen in the water with lessons. Some of my other kids in there. We employ, I think we had 15 of our high school kids this summer. Great young people, and, you know, they've been around water, great, great employees. And like I say, it's always fun to then give a couple of them a scholarship at the end of the year. We also do Red Cross training for lifeguards, and you can see how many we've done there. We help everybody. We've really helped everybody in the county. In fact, right now, I've been in contact with Brookings a lot. They have an outside pool, kind of like Mingus's, and they would like it open more. So trying to give them some guidance and stuff. But we train from, you know, there's a band in church group, and we train those kids. And, yeah, we'll train anybody that needs it. So it's a good program. It's a good thing for the kids to have, or anybody.
We've got $500 scholarships. I'll make a correction in that. We upped that the ante, I want to say-
Two thousand.
Two or three meetings ago.
Yeah.
This last year and the year before, $1,000 went to-
Yeah, each.
Boy and a girl.
Yeah.
Somebody who identifies as a boy and a girl.
The Boiler Project, yeah, that was. Here's one of my little Gold Coast guys. It's Jensen Rogowski. Yeah, he was a- He went out and raised, I think, almost $2,500. And people were- people really stepped forward on that. And it was interesting to me, you know, a lot of the, in fact, the biggest donor was one of the people that in '75, when we took over the pool, his family was involved, and his kids swam. And his wife was an official and stuff. So it was interesting to see all those people come back and support again, and it's been very important to him, so. And once again, you know, when we went over, North Bend let us go over there and swim. I got both my teams in there, so that really worked well, too. And we had a dinner for the people down at the pool. It's a beautiful setting down there for the people that didn't mind being recognized for their donations. And that turned out really well, so I thought it was a nice thing to do.
Jim Lorenz from the coach house. If anybody's never tried him, he does a fantastic job.
And he's a swimmer?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, he's escaped from Alcatraz a couple times.
Is that all we have on there?
That's it.
I just, you know, I-
Anybody caring up yet?
Thank you, Jennifer, for asking us here tonight. I think, you know, what's important to me is I've been around so long now, and I know a lot of people, but there's been a lot of changes, a lot of people retiring. And I think it's important that people know our story and what we're doing. And, you know, I wouldn't be able to survive down there if I didn't have people help out or donate or- You know, I can give you an example. Just the other day, I was down there by myself on the Friday after Thanksgiving, and, you know, we have the big tarps and the wheel, the broke, needed to be rewelded. So I have this big wheel and this piece, and I'm going, okay, you know, what am I gonna do? And of course, I couldn't leave. And so I had it laying in back of me, and that one lap swimmer goes, well, what's going on there? And I said, well, this just snapped. I'm gonna have to get it welded, but I don't know where, and I can't leave. And anyway, she says, you know what? I've got the day off. I'm gonna take it. I'm gonna go find where I can get it welded. And she did. She wouldn't let me repair. But, you know, it's those type of things. I can call Jamie Faraday up the street, and I need, you know, can you come down and help me with this? Robert Lounsbury, he swims a lot. He's retaping the wheels for me. It's, you know, I- and I appreciate just being able to know people. And like I know Joe, if I need to go up to Joe and say, well, can you lead me in the right direction? You know, who would I would ask here or whatever? And, you know, Roger Craddock was always so, so great. He was on our board and stuff. And he would sit by me, and if I didn't know something, he'd say, Kathy, this is how you should do it. You know what I mean? But I just loved his way about everybody's been so kind. And anyway, we've got a great people. I'm blessed to live here. And, you know, this- that pool wouldn't be down there if we didn't have people in this area that were willing to give and give money and give their time. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And before you leave, Kathy, I just want you to know how much we appreciate you and the board. You know, it's wonderful what you've done there, and you've mentioned it more than once, how this is a wonderful community situation. It's not Coos Bay or North Bend. It's for the whole community, and you do that. And by your demeanor and how you approach things, that's why everyone's willing to step up. It's a great partnership, and, you know, I just can't thank you enough for everything you've done.
We have patrons that come up from Kokio, Banden, Greensport. It's more of a regional pool than it is just a city pool.
It is, and I mean, like you said, you have the swim meets, and when I had the restaurant, it was a great draw. Kathy's very good about asking for things, because she did that constantly when I was there. And so, but that's good. That's what it takes. And so, and we were all willing to help because it was such an asset and a benefit. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and thank you, guys.
Okay, the next item is presentation of an appreciation service plaque for a public works director, Jim Hosley. Why don't you come up to the podium, Jim, please?
Well, Jim, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. Back in the day in 2005, when you came to work here, that was my- I was still mayor at that time. And if I remember correctly, you and your family moved from Arizona. And it was a big change for Jim to come up here, and it was his family's getting acclimated. But besides Jim being a wonderful community public works director, his family became a great community participant and were cemented in this community and became part of the community. And I think everyone has enjoyed their time here, and you have kids growing up and on and on. And so, yeah, it's- and you're still here, which is great. So you've been the community service director, public works and development director. You've gone through a few different changes, urban renewal projects manager, public works and community development director, and the public works director again. I mean, he's had many titles, handled many different situations. I mean, in this title, you know, streets, it's wastewater. I mean, it's a large, our largest, I think, in the city of personnel. And you've done a fantastic job. And you've put up with these councils and me and for a long period of time, so I want to thank you for that. Recent projects of note would be Plant Two. I know that was a major issue, and we finally got that through. The East Side Safe Routes to School, which is a huge thing. Successful transition to the in-house operation management of the wastewater, which we took back over. And I know that wasn't an easy feat to do, and the transition was very difficult to get done. Implementation of the transparency utility fee that we had many variations from and couldn't decide exactly where to land. And Counselor DeNovo said, enough, we just need to step up to the plate and make sure it's the right amount. And I think that was your, you were advocating for that. This is what it was gonna cost, and you were able to guide us through what we needed to do to get there and be where we're at. I think at that time, we were 50 years behind. I'm just gonna shoot from the hip on this. And I think that we might have whittled it down to we're only 25 years behind. But anyway, we're making progress. And Plant One upgrades. So Jim, you've done so many things. I just want to express my gratitude and the city council's gratitude for the many years, the dedicated service that you have given to the city of Coos Bay. Your hard work and commitment have positively impacted our community, and it has truly been a pleasure to work alongside you. I want to wish you a happy and fulfillment retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet. And we can't let you leave with- And we can't, we can't let you leave without a plaque, right? So presented to Jim Hosley, Public Works Director from 2005 to 2024. In recognition of over the 19 years of dedicated service you have led with a vision and a commitment as Community Services Director, Public Works and Development Director, Urban Renewal Projects Manager, Public Works and Community Development Director, and the Public Works Director again. And we just want to present you with this plaque. It's a small token of your service, but it's very much appreciated. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We're going to, so what we're going to do, we can do it now, we're going to take a picture in front of the tree with Jim. All right, let's do it now.
Can everyone, if you can, give us a little bit of time here? You don't need to get up, Rob. Now you can do it.
Go ahead. Get her up.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for allowing us to do this presentation. It was really a special person that's done a lot of work for us and been like family for us. That's how we, I think we consider our staff here. We want someone that especially, I can tell you, they put up with me, so I'm one of the difficult children, I think. So anyway, thank you. Action items, discussion review of design costs for Front Street to Mingus Park Bike Path. All the council, we have this in our packet, I hope you had the chance to kind of review it. I think there's some important things that have come to light on this. Greg, I'm going to ask you, if you don't mind, to come up and kind of go through this with us. So reading through this, I know that we have, we still have some money for a design, to complete the design, I guess, I should say. And I don't know, it's around $80,000, something like that?
It's right around $90,000.
$90,000? And so then, reading through this myself, I see that this, it would cost us approximately $360,000 that we would have to come up with to implement this, if, even if we continued on with the design. Am I correct?
To construct it, yes.
So we get the $360,000 plus the $90,000 for design?
Correct.
To go from Front Street to Mingus Park, which is just a couple of blocks. I know it's a great idea and I applaud the thought behind this, but I think it's very difficult since we don't have ODOT at this time that's willing to participate in the crossing and a big part of that cost. And therefore, and I know, unless I'm wrong, Melissa, we don't have the funds for this that we have at hand, these would come, we don't have a specific area that these would come out of. So anyway, can you shed some light? I mean, am I correct in my comments and my off base or?
No, your comments are right where they need to be. The, the staff reached out to the ODOT, we've got design costs from ODOT for the crossing at Market and 101. And we reached out to Southern Oregon Transportation Engineering for the design of the Sheroes itself and the bike signal phase at Fourth and Commercial. And that's where those costs for the design part of that came from. Staff also did reach out to, in the packet, there's a project up in Philomath that was very similar to what we're proposing with this project. Staff reached out to the contractor that did the installation up there, we ascertained the cost for that. And then we also did work through the cost of construction with ODOT as well, and that's where these numbers all came up from. So the costs are, I think are pretty good, close estimates of what the cost to install it would be. And then the budget is, I believe, would become out of fund 45. And I believe there's $167,000 in that budget line item for bike and ped improvements.
Right. So the $90,000 for the design, where, what fund does that come out of? Is that the-
Out of that same fund.
Does it? So I guess I'll put you on the spot. I mean, what is your recommendation with the information that you've given us here?
Well, staff's asking council for a recommendation as to whether or not to move forward with that project. I don't necessarily know if staff has a recommendation based off of the budget and based off of how much money we get each year into that bucket. It's a, it's a, it's a decision, I think, for council.
Okay. So anyone have any questions for Greg?
Nicole, actually I have a question for Nicole. I know staff doesn't have a recommendation, but as city manager, Nicole, do you want to weigh in this and give us your best recommendation?
Yeah, so I first just kind of, I guess, provide a little bit of feedback on what that fund is intended to cover in the city. So all of our bike and pedestrian pathways throughout the city, that fund is supposed to cover the cost of those maintenance and essentially capital projects. It's slow growing because it's built on a percentage off of the gas tax, so to deplete it is a challenge because then you don't have another resource for any of the other assets in the city. We fortunately, timely maybe, just had a conversation with ODOT. They brought four members of their team here this week and we had members of our team meeting. And they're looking at some 101 revisions, kind of north section of 101 here in Coos Bay, along with the work they're doing with the ADA ramps and things like that. They do have an interest in kind of creating some potential bike and ped path there and, and maybe even on Newmark. Still kind of working through some of those things, I'm not quite certain what that's going to look like. But I think this could be an opportunity for us to kind of wait and see what they come in and put in and how then we might be able to incorporate. I, I still think it's, we could benefit by having kind of a larger plan rather than kind of piecemealing some of these things across the city. Our ultimate goal is definitely to make the community as a whole more accessible with all modes of transport. We just want to be thoughtful about it because the bucket's really small.
Yeah, and you know, it's a, I mean, I think that's a great start and before this packet came out, Nicole met with ODOT afterwards. And I think there's some, I think Dean may be pushing a little bit, might have helped ODOT be a little bit more reasonable. And she met with them here and so was able to maybe discuss some things that we can do to facilitate this. And Councilor Matthews and I, I'm not sure this, this is my opinion, I'm not sure this is the best route. And I agree with Nicole, I think that we need to look at the city as a whole instead of just a small, short piece. So Councilor Matthews and I had, he had suggestion on how to approach this a little bit differently. And I think that on a bigger scale, and I think that we need to think about that. If we're going to make it really advantageous and something that's good for the whole city, I think we need to think a little bit differently and maybe in a bigger way. So anyone else, councilors, you want to chime in?
Well, I just, based on the information that you've just mentioned and Nicole had mentioned first, thank you to Dean and others who did help advocate for the path, for them to be here. And I'm glad to hear that they are working on a project that potentially we can benefit from. So what I think I'm hearing you say, Nicole, is that at this time, you don't recommend moving forward with this because we're going to wait to see what ODOT might do. And they're going to work on some bike paths and perhaps we can have them pay for more of this and that'll allow us more time to put a plan together. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the, I would just, I guess, maybe a little bit correction there in that they may not be coming back through with this specific route to pay for, that there may be some other that they're looking at. They might have interest to look a little bit more at that intersection that we all have concerns for, for safety. So I think if we, if we just pause for a moment, give them the opportunity to come in, I think that's coming in this next year. And then from that, we can determine what, what a good path forward as we build out throughout the city. So that'd be my recommendation, is take a pause.
Thank you.
Mayor Benetti, just, just a question or maybe some clarification also. It's not ODOT coming in and telling us what they want to do, it's a collaboration with our staff, which has the ears of our citizens in, I just want to be careful that we don't have them telling us what they want to do. We, we know that we have some concerns from businesses and citizens and so that, that will be taken into consideration in this process. But I, I agree that I think I would rather not put a piece of something that could potentially be bigger or better or work, more workable in our community, just to put it on a shelf and then maybe not get back to it and spend all of this money that we have from this very small bucket and not get what we need further down the road, so.
Okay, anyone else?
Carmen, I think.
Yeah, Carmen.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak up. I do like this plan. I do think it would dovetail well into a larger city plan, especially just the fact that that Front Street crossing into downtown really needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. And I don't, I have a feeling that ODOT won't bring it much farther past 101, so the rest of the plan, going to Mingus Park would be, feels like more our directive. But at the same rate, I mean, I, yeah, I have grandiose ideas of ways to, you know, completely revamp things, but I don't see that happening anytime soon. And I did appreciate and do appreciate the work that's been done on this, this current I am hesitant to wait just because I am impatient to see that, that intersection at 101 and Front Street look a little bit better and be safer and, and to get really any movement going on that, on that front with the bicycle plan. But I do see the value in waiting to see how we can get ODOT to work with us and our master plan for bikes, bicycle transportation as a city and see how that can work together because we do have a very limited amount of funding, unfortunately. I, yeah, I, I'm sad to see this, this one maybe be put on the shelf because I do think it's a good plan and I think it's a good start. But if we don't think we can afford it and we want to wait another year to see what ODOT can do, I, I, I will try to be patient. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Troy?
I concur. I'm willing to go with the rest of the council. I'm going to go back to my trope of, I just don't understand where these costs come from, $60,000 for the design part of it. Because I'd like to see it, too. I just, some of this, that limits us is the, the very expensive construction and engineering permitting costs. It seems to be a recurrent theme for me.
Jacob?
Nope, I'm just listening and taking it all in and I think the idea of getting some more input from ODOT and having a bigger, wider plan, I think, seems the most prudent course, especially with limited funds.
All right, thanks. And so for the design costs, it's $98,000, not the 61, there's only 61 left in the fund. And then there'd be another 335. I think, Nicole, how long did it be before ODOT would get back to us?
Well, I think they want to specifically look at that and certainly there was, they had four people and we had four people in the room, so if I'm missing a piece, certainly fill in the gaps. But they want to look at that intersection there, Market and 101. From the safety standpoint, 101 north, as we know, there's the traffic lights at the other intersection. And then they are speaking to bike lanes north on 101 and also through some areas of Newmark. So what that looks like ultimately, I think we'll see over the coming months, but they are interested in looking at that intersection.
Yeah, and I think that's a big piece, you know, I mean, I've been advocating for this intersection to be, have a light years ago because of the, the impact we have with Coos Bay Village. And then Coos Bay Village came around and they said there wasn't enough traffic at that time to warrant it, but now we have so much traffic going down there that it does warrant it. And if we could get ODOT to step up and put an intersection in there, then the next piece to this would be very accessible and reasonable in cost. And then I think we can address it at that time. But I think it would be a waste of the $98,000 under the circumstances where we're at at this time. So I would say that we just table this or look at it another time, once we get the intersection piece figured out.
I would ask that, I know we'll be doing a goal setting session, that's a two-year plan, so, so that we don't lose sight of this project, that we put that on the goal setting session, excuse me, as a goal for the biennium.
Okay, noted.
All right, anything else?
I guess if I, last opportunity to say, Dean, you were a significant part of that conversation, your help in talking with ODOT over the months has really encouraged them, so.
We have, we have market students.
Yeah, so.
It's their responsibility.
Just wanted to acknowledge your-
To respond to us.
You're right. So that, we, we need ODOT to step up and I'm hoping that they will, and it sounds like they've had a good conversation with staff, so I appreciate it. Greg, Nicole, everyone else that was involved in this, thank you so much. And we'll keep finding a way to have a bike path throughout the city.
Do we need a motion? Nate, no? Okay.
All right, thanks again. Next item on the agenda is appointment to the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board. Nicole?
Yes, thank you. Councilor Matthews was appointed to the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board in May of 2022 and his service period is up as of the end of this month. We've had a conversation with him to determine whether or not he's interested to continue to serve and he's indicated such. So what we are bringing before you is the opportunity to consider his reappointment. Just as a reminder, the City Council appoints two members to the Water Board's Board of Directors and North Bend appoints two. Carmen is one of our representatives appointed by council and the second is Rob Kilmer.
So I think it's great that Carmen wants to continue. I guess I would ask Carmen, do you want to continue to serve on the Water Board?
I would absolutely love to continue. I've really enjoyed being at the Water Board. It's a city function that really just interests me and I, I find it something to explore and I'm really passionate about water quality and emergency preparedness and I just, I think it's really important and I'm really grateful that you all have in the past entrusted me with being a representative. And yeah, I'm really enjoying it. It's a great crew over there.
Well, we appreciate you serving on there. So with that being the case, I would ask for a motion to reappoint Councilor Matthews to the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board for a term expiring on 12/31/28.
I'll move to reappoint Councilor Matthews to the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board for a term expiring on December 31st, 2028.
Second.
So moving second to reappoint Councilor Matthews to the Water Board. Are there any other comments or discussions? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, it passes. Thank you for agreeing to serve again. Carmen?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is city manager report.
Yes, thank you. Since our last meeting, we had a pretty significant event in this community. We had a tsunami warning and then subsequent evacuation. We are kind of still working through some of that. We did have an internal kind of after-action review and have some steps from that. We also are going to be meeting with the Coos Bay School District. They're, they're another organization who has a huge responsibility for a lot of folks who, the kids that are in the school. So just to kind of let you know that that's underway, we've put out a survey just to kind of get some feedback from the community on how they learned about the event and details are related to that. I learned just before this meeting, we've had so far 163 respondents to the survey, so pretty excited. It was just kind of a quick pull it together, some Captain Lindell kind of put that survey together to get it out there, to- to get it out there, to get some initial feedback. We're gonna also be working on some community educational opportunities over the coming weeks and through January while it's still kind of live in people's minds. Definitely kind of trying to hammer home that two-weeks-ready idea and ultimately helping people understand their location, so where their home is and whether or not that's a safe place to kind of just stay at versus needing to evacuate to higher ground. So we learned a lot of great things. Happy for the opportunity, I guess you could say, but definitely some some things we can do to improve our response and our community's awareness and education. So we'll be doing that, report back to you guys as as we kind of let those events unfold, so.
So Nicole, we will see a report then of learnings and, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Well, definitely, once we kind of get that fine tune. Another thing that we understand to be an opportunity is our federal delegation reached out, you know, obviously concerned for this, the community here, the South Coast, and if there was any needs from this. So we'll definitely be putting together some some needs. Well, you know, maybe our first need is being able to set up our Emergency Operations Center now that we have the full responsibility of dispatch here for the county, making sure that's operational in both locations, so we will, we're gonna put in a big ask and and hope that they can help us out there, so. I just wanted to share, we had the Annual Economic Outlook Forum on Friday. That's a chamber event and the city had a panel. Mayor Benetti and myself and Greg Drobat were able to speak on the Timber Cove project along with several of the things that this council has done to encourage development in this community, programs that you have in place, code changes you've done to make it, you know, reduce barriers. So it was a great event. Interesting kind of focus to pull it in for housing, but that's everybody kind of seeming to think that's important right now, so. Really good attendance. I don't know what the numbers were. I haven't heard from Rosie, but it seemed like it was well-attended, so. Kind of segueing into Timber Cove a little bit, Mayor and I had an opportunity to go on the site today. It's beautiful up there. Amazing how much they've already kind of done in there. We had some opportunity this weekend with kind of helping partner on that culvert. It's really been a turkey since they started to mow up there, so we had some time kind of watching and pumping in that culvert and they've shared some time, so it's been really kind of a nice effort together to get that Lindy Lane culvert kind of worked. And that maybe segues because that same team did the work at the Coos History Museum recently, building out that additional leg of the boardwalk, the walking path there. It's nearly ready for opening. They are gonna have inspection tomorrow morning, so there are some barricades that have been up on that walkway. It's mostly related to just finalizing whether or not there needs to be maybe another set of armrails along the sloped side where the driveway is, but I think we're fine at this point in talking to permitting today, so. That will, those will come off and you'll be able to traverse the whole boardwalk hopefully tomorrow morning, so.
So hopefully tomorrow morning they'll come off and we'll be able to walk it?
Yes.
Because at the moment, I'm not sure if the council and maybe the public's not aware of it, not just the new sidewalk is blocked off, but the old sidewalk is blocked off. So for me, who walks it frequently, it is very disturbing because it was an attraction and the intent was to finish that piece of the sidewalk, which was 250,000. I'm not sure what the other sidewalk cost, but it was to connect Front Street and to have it blocked was very disappointing that it was. But I think if a rail is necessary, I think that's something that the History Museum should look at in costing. Because it's going to be weird that they do it that way.
Yeah, I don't think there is. There just was concern for that in talking to permitting today that that's.
Well, we didn't have a rail before.
Well, the, it didn't come down. I mean, the sidewalk comes all the way down, but just to let you know, it is, yeah, intended tomorrow. In fairness, the History Museum Board felt until they had a release on the permits that it was best practice to keep that closed off, so. It should get an inspection in the morning, which will then be able to open it up, so.
The point is though it's safer today now than it's ever been because of the financial gift from the city of Coos Bay.
Safer and more usable, yeah, yeah.
So it begs the question, is this something that we need to think about discussing with the museum of getting a public right-of-way so we don't run into this? Not now, but down the road. I mean, I'm just trying to be a little bit prudent. Future councils, future city managers, whoever, that at some point, this could still, we could be at this junction again for whatever reason.
It's, you know, that's certainly always a possibility. I think their concern was this was a new build-out and making sure that it was safe and it was released by the city, so. It's always a path you could take, for sure. I don't know that it's necessary. I think they were trying to reduce their risk and their liability, and I think that we've resolved that and and tomorrow we'll.
And I, and I don't think that we'll have a problem with the executive director and the board that we have now, but we don't know what the future holds. It's what I'm, I guess is where I'm going. And I guess I would ask Nate to weigh in on this because if we don't have this in place, and I think we have a good relationship with this board and this director, this might be the time to broach this and have this in place. Plus, the liability would come back on the city for that sidewalk if we had the public right-of-way. Am I correct?
If it's a public right-of-way, yes. I mean, if we're just talking about an easement, they're, you know, both sides could be responsible.
Right, but if we make it a right-of-way, then the responsibility comes on us. That would lessen the burden for them and then also we have something in place that that sidewalk will always be available for the public. Anyway, just my thoughts. I don't know, Nate, if you want to weigh in or the rest of the council?
Yeah, you can certainly look at it.
I I agree with, yeah, very good idea. I think it makes a lot of sense and I have all the confidence in the board and the executive director and I appreciate that they just wanted to wait for the permit, but we do not know what the future looks like and quite honestly, people forget things and so we want to make sure that that is always, there is always public access.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted your.
Nope, that's good. The last two that I was gonna talk about, it was, will be closed. City Hall's closed next week in celebration of the Christmas holiday, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are both recognized by the city for the staff to be off. And then I do plan to take some time off next week. I'm not sure what that'll look like, but beyond the two days that we're closed, so.
Good for you. So a little follow-up on your comments. On the tsunami warning that we had and that went through, I want it to be known that Senator Wyden's office and Merkley and Congressman or Congresswoman Val Hoyle contacted me personally to make sure that everything was all right. Is there anything they could do? It was very much appreciated. I put them in contact from Nicole and so she's reached out to them and gave them a list of many things we could do and we'd want. And good for her, right? So I appreciate that. The other thing, I know that the fans came down on First Interstate Bank property, which is 101 and I don't know what the other street is, but because it's not necessary that they have it, which is fine, but it it stirred the or brought up the point for many individuals and citizens, what's going on? And it doesn't look like much is going on, but my question is, with it just sitting there, which is disappointing, but it is their property and they have a right to do it, but also the weeds are growing and is there some way that we can maybe enact in order to do something to make it, where they can keep it contained? I mean, at some point, I know I might be stretching it a little bit, but we could have a potential fire. I mean, we've talked about, you know, containing some foliage in the city before, but this is on the commercial, this is on 101. I would hope that maybe we could see if something could be done about it.
So I do think we have some language already in our code in regards to vegetation height when it's traffic impediment, and so there could be that piece. We can certainly, as you come out to.
I don't know if it's that high at this point, but anyway, I think it's, I mean, it's really, it does not look very nice and I would hope that we would have, First Interstate Bank would be, want to be a better community partner than just let this be an overgrown lot. And so, or if there's something in place that we could say, hey, you know, keep it mowed or something.
We have in the past, if we deemed it a, you know, a safety concern, we have done the work and billed the property owners. Not that property, but other properties, so.
Anyway, just my commentary. Anyone, anything else for Nicole from anyone? No? All right, we're at council comments. So Jacob, we'll start with you.
Okay. First, I do want to say, I know the pool folks jetted out, but I do teach over at Sunset School and for the last two years we've gone over and it's been one of the most fun weeks of the whole school year for the kids to go out and swim and get swim lessons. And the whole school does it and I know they do the same over at Mila Coma and what they do over there is wonderful and I love it. So kudos to them. Sorry, I said it now rather than when they're here. But other thing, I know I mentioned it last time, but this Thursday at Sunset School, we've got our winter family night. Starts at 5:30 and it's free for anybody to come. And then also at Coos Art Museum, the We're All Homeless exhibit closes on December 29th and that's also free to visit, but I gotta plug that because my wife's director over at the art museum. So if you haven't been there, check it out. It's pretty good. And happy holidays.
All right, thank you. Stephanie?
Yeah, just, I can't, I can't help but at least make one comment about the the pool. Wow, what a, what a story that they told tonight. And I know it's hard to believe because I look so youthful, but I was a product of that 1975 visit to the pool and 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 did that. I actually think it was longer than that because I was in sixth grade at Blossom Gulch. And I remember doing that walk after we had been in the pool, back to school, and it was very cold. But what a tremendous asset we have in Kathy and Helen and what they do in this community and that board supporting the programs that they do, the after-school programs and and the community building. I actually was working for North Bend when their pool was taken out of commission and and they did a youth program and they worked with North Bend to make that happen and it was some of the kids that had never been in a pool that went through that program and were able to get lessons for free during that time. So we we have a tremendous asset. I hope it never goes away because it's been around for such a long time and it's a beauti, there is no better setting for a pool, so I appreciate all the people that work and make that happen. And speaking of appreciation, the Bus Jam Toy and Food Drive Distribution was held this past weekend. Coos Bay North Bend Rotary puts that on with the help of a lot of partners in our community, including the Mila, I think almost everybody in this council has helped with that program in one way or another and over 1,000 children were served because of the generosity of our community. And so that was 23 years. I I don't know who won the collection, if it was North Bend or Coos Bay. I think it was North Bend again, so we gotta up our game over here. But anyway, the winners are the kids and the families who benefited and so I just want to say, great presentation at the EOF and happy holidays to everybody.
Thanks, Stephanie. Lucinda?
Well, I, I too wanted to thank Kathy for her passion, for her commitment to the children and for her love of this community. We've all benefited from from that. It reminded me as she was sharing her story of shore acres and this year they're celebrating their 37th year. And David and Shirley Bridham shared a story with me many years ago that a group of people sat at a kitchen table and said, how do we drive more people into this community? And we're going on 37 years, over 300,000 lights and thousands of people visit that beautiful, beautiful park every year, so. Aren't we lucky to have such passionate people in our community that make it such a wonderful place to live, so? And with that, I would like to say thank you to Jim, another person who is passionate about this community. I want to say, since being elected to city council in 2016, you know that the fun stuff for me isn't, sorry, the public work stuff and you know that and you've always been a steady for me and you've made it very easy for me to understand the work that that is done and you've you've explained it in in such a a wonderful educational way and you've always had the city, the city's best interest at heart and it's it's shown in all the positions you've been in, so. I just want to say thank you for all you've done to make this city a better place and make this community a better place and I wish you all the very best, my friend, in your retirement, so, thank you.
And with that said, I also just want to say happy holidays to to everyone and I just want to again appreciate, or excuse me, express my gratitude to this council and to the staff for all the great things that get accomplished every day and just the this this council's commitment to trying to make this community a better place too, so, thank you.
Thanks. Troy?
I don't know Jim that well, but I did want to say that I've appreciated that he's always very reasoned and rational and very calm and I appreciate that. So I hope you have great plans for your next chapter, whatever that is.
Thanks, Troy. Carmen? Oh, you're muted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, first off, I just wanted to echo Councilor Genovo's comments and support of wishing Jim Hostly a wonderful retirement. It's been a pleasure to interact with you on this council, but also as a private citizen and you've always been approachable and easy to work with, helpful with trying to understand all of these public work projects and it's always interesting to just have you help us through learning and exploring. So thank you, Jim, for all of your hard work. We really do appreciate you and wish you well in your retirement. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to the Mingus Park Pool Board and everybody who works there. I I continue to enjoy the pool and its services. My daughter swims there every week. I was there this evening and it's just a wonderful asset for this community. And I just, I hope we continue to support it and as a community and of course as a council. And then on to the Mingus Park Bike Path. I just want to thank everybody who tried to make something work with that. I wish we had movement in some way. I wish I had a magic wand and we could make this happen real quick and and get this community bike-ready and bike-safe. Unfortunately, that's not today, but I also wanted to mention that I did receive the comments for tonight's meeting on discussion points for the bike path from Vim de Vrend. He emailed us his comments and pictures and his his comments were on point in terms of bicycle safety, really included a much more intense structural demand for bicycle separation from cars and I really hope at some point in the future we have a bicycle-friendly community like that, so. I just wanted to mention that and thank you for reappointing me to the water board. I really do enjoy it. It is something I'm just always learning on and I really enjoy all the staff over there. So thank you for helping me on with that and also just happy holidays to everyone. Thanks for all you do, staff. I hope you guys are, have a wonderful holiday. The rest of the council, everybody online, thank you and happy holidays.
Thanks, Carmen, and thanks for mentioning Vim de Vrend's letter to all of us. I think it needed to be addressed, though. Thanks for bringing it up. So at the economic forum, one thing that we did not address and that I think is important is the timeframe that we did on getting Timber Cove going. Because seriously, for this size of a project, we did it within months and I think we need to really make. of a project, we did it within months, and I think we need to really make that point that the staff worked very hard with the developer to fast-track this and get this going. I mean, was it four months? Five months? I mean, it was a very short period of time, and so I want to commend the staff for doing that. I mean, they stepped up, they worked with the developer, we have a four-hundred-unit development going in on a very short period of time, this thing was permitted, and they broke ground. So, you know, kudos, right? And I don't think that was mentioned at the forum, and we should have, that was, we were remiss in doing that. So anyway, yesterday at the mayor's walk was in Coos Bay, and so the group walked to view some historical buildings. Gene from the library, does he work there? Okay, so Gene from the library showed us some great buildings and gave us a great information about them. I mean, it was very interesting, and usually these walks go for about an hour, but this was like an hour and a half. Everyone was intrigued, they wanted to know more, and he only did some of the buildings, but there's many more. And we were able to, the Carnegie Library, the owners that were there and had refurbished it, turned it into three apartments, and then a room that's utilized by all, he let us come in and showed us around. It was phenomenal what he has done there, and so the interest was phenomenal, and I suggest anyone that has the opportunity to do it, get ahold of Gene and get a tour, and I think we should probably hit him up to do it again. He's very involved, and he had the detail about it also. Anyway, thank you. And today, as Nicole mentioned, we both had the opportunity to go out to Timber Cove Development with Daniel Grant, and everyone that knows Daniel, he's very engaged in this project, and was telling about how he's going to get up there, he's already been up with his lawnmower, da-da-da-da-da, and everything that's going on, so, and he stated that he wants to have a home this summer. He said that everyone that he's told that to gives him an odd look, like, yeah, sure, but that's what he's going for, and good for him, I'm looking forward to that process having on moving forward. Again, Jim, I want to thank you for your service, and I also would be remiss if I didn't want to thank your wife for standing behind you, and because it takes a good partner, and I know that she was right there with you, so thank you. I want also to congratulate Jennifer on being appointed to the public works director, congratulations, well-deserved. I want to thank the city council and the staff. I also want to thank the city council and staff for their hard work and dedication to the city this year. Your hard work has been a positive impact on the city, and because of it, we've had much economic development, improved infrastructure, and many services that have been provided to the citizens of our wonderful city. I also want to take this time to wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year, and it's going to be a great, wonderful two thousand twenty-five. So anyway, I'll adjourn the meeting, and thank you so much.